How about if we prohibit retractable leases, yeah, leashes, on those two locations and then in the dog park or wherever the other parks where there's plenty of room and you don't have that conflict, then still the ordinance does provide dogs must be under physical control at all times so that addresses the human requirement to keep the dogs under control. And it would be easy to enforce because if you have a retractable leash in either the dog park or the Pontegora pathways, that would be in violation.
My problem is that I have to carry two leashes.
How would you know?
If the ordinance was is I can only use six to eight feet or whatever that number is of my retractable leash, that's one issue. But if, but the way that's written out, then when I go to the park with my dog, I have to carry two leashes. And it's in my pocket.
And I'm okay with just maybe a 10-foot leash. If it's retractable, then it's under your, the one operating the leash, you should know that your dog shouldn't be more than 10 feet. I think that's generous enough. The other issue that I'm thinking of is that technically in Gilchrist, the dogs are supposed to be on the pathways and not in the park. So if we give them a 16-foot leash, I mean, clearly, they're going to be making it all the way into the park, which, you know, some people don't like that rule, but we agreed last time that we wanted to keep that intact. So I'm worried about the 16 for sure, but I'm not, the retractable, I'm not so inclined to ban those. Kim?
Nature Park is a special situation, first off, because of all the work that is out there and dogs going in, getting into the flowers and stuff like that. Reta doesn't really have that, so, you know, the dogs do run around. Everybody has a retractable leash. How are we going to tell, we're going to make an ordinance that, how are we even going to get that out there? I think what you're saying here, David, is you, you know, you have to have your dog under control. You, you know, if that's a problem, you know, then people can report that or someone needs to know. You, you know, most people are courteous and most people will do it, but I, I will tell you, it's really our older community and it's really usually these little tiny dogs and they're on, and, you know, they're just not capable of taking them for the walk that the dog really needs. So they let them run around with that big leash. That's how they get their exercise. So, most people are courteous. I just think if we try to make it, well, this certain length or that, except for Nature Park, I mean, I think they should be on a six-foot length leash in Nature Park, just because they're going to be going into an area that's really groomed. The other areas, everybody has those leashes. I don't see anybody with a, I mean, I'm probably the only other person that has a leash that's not, and I have one of those.
Well, I just still think 16 is way too long. Nancy?
I don't, I agree with you. It's, it would be not a good idea to prohibit the retractable leash, but my concern is on the pathways, on the harbor walk, I think that's having a six-foot length is really appropriate because of the amount of walkers and bicyclists and I just think it's, it's an important safety factor.
You want to open the public hearing?
Yeah.
Okay. We would like to hear from the public on GA-11-15. Please come to the podium and state your name. You have three minutes. Dog owners out there? Yes.
Gary Skellicorn, Pontegora resident. With regard to the Nature Park, I think I was one of the advocates about suggesting allowing walking in the Nature Park. I think you have to realize there's a part of the Nature Park that I don't think most, most people see. There's a pathway that leads around Nature Park. It's about a half a mile long. I don't think we're talking about people walking their dogs among the gardens. I don't think anybody's interested in walking their dogs. We're talking about the path. And I do feel that the park is so underutilized, it's a rarity that I go by there, except on a Friday when people are working there, that there's not more than one car in that entire park. I think we should advocate people walking their dogs on that half-mile path around the Nature Park. So, control other places perhaps, but that Nature Park is underutilized. It's a beautiful place. We should encourage it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments on GA-11-15? Last call?
Move to close the public hearing. Second?
We have a motion, a second, to close the public hearing on GA-11-15. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Well...
Are you thinking that you can, I mean, I don't know that the retractable leashes are six feet anyway. Are you saying only, you can only let it out six feet?
Or 10, I guess. I'm, I'm at a 10. I would feel comfortable with a 10.
I think that's pretty reasonable on a sidewalk.
Le, a leash 10 feet long, whether it's just a regular or retractable.
I'm okay with that. The width in the Pontegora pathways is probably not any more than 10 feet in any event, if that was a consideration, so I would be fine with that.
I mean, what you don't want is you don't want that, that small dog going the length of the leash into the flower bed. That's what you don't want. Other than that...
And if they, go ahead.
I just don't know how you'd enforce that. You know, I, I don't know what the length of a retractable leash is, but I, you know, if it's...
I think they're 11 and 16 and 25.
Yeah, yeah. 11, 16, 25.
So, you know, somebody get out a 25-foot leash and then when the police come by, it's retracted to six. So, I, you know, I just don't know how we'd enforce that.
Maybe, then maybe we need to not have the leash length and just say the dogs must be under physical control at all times. Does that take care of it?
It, it should, yeah. I mean, that's, that way you don't have to get into the argument as to how long was the leash.
I think it's...
Because you can, you can have, you can have a six-foot, you can have a six-foot leash and still not have that dog under control, so...
That's true.
I know, I can't control my dog.
And you can have a properly trained dog that's under complete control without any leash at all.
Sorry.
I mean, they go both extremes.
That's my...
Which is only allowed really in Hounds on Henry, but, but...
I'm, I'm okay with under control.
And take out the leash altogether? Dogs must be under physical control at all times, period. Nancy?
I'm okay with that. I'll introduce a thought, and that is, and not obstruct pedestrians and bicyclists and other people who are using the pathways. I mean, I'm okay if there's no one there.
Right.
It's, you know, what's the difference? But if there are people using it, we need to rein the dog in so that the dog isn't out there and people are having to step over the leash and, and those kinds of things.
He's scribbling while he's scribbling.
It's because it's not only dangerous for the people on the bike and the people walking, it's dangerous for the dog.
Yes.
You know, you have to have the dog by you if there's bikes and that type of thing going by because they might get spooked.
Right.
And then now you've got a whole catastrophe going on, people falling over on bikes. I mean, I've seen it all.
Tom, do you think there is an issue with dogs getting into the flower areas? I mean, because we could possibly even put at Nature Park, yeah, on the, on the trail, Nature Park Trail, we could specify that. Leash dogs shall be permitted in Nature, on the Nature Park Trail area.
I, I really don't think there's that kind of...
There's not an area, there's not a problem?
No, I wouldn't want to be seen as micromanaging.
Right. And I think people, for the most part, are respectful for the work that's done there, so...
I think on a positive, just based on our citizens' comment, if the Nature Park got busy enough, it became a problem, then we can deal with the issue, and that's an issue we would like to be able to deal with.
Right.
Yes.
And until, until it becomes an issue, we want to encourage people leaving the park.
We do. We do.
And just to interject, there is, if you look at the last paragraph, we did put a sentence in there about animals which disturb other park users, other animals or resources that are being noisy, dangerous, intimidating, or destructive will be considered a public nuisance. And Chapter 5 of the city code addresses how to enforce animals as a public nuisance. So we do have that...
Yeah, it is in there.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I was just looking at that language also from the stamp, from the pamphlet, but we might, in this particular section, we might add these words. Dogs must be under physical control at all times and shall not interfere with bicyclists or pedestrians.
I think that does it.
I'm okay with that.
I'm okay with that.
Jazzy segues.
Yes.
Sam.
I'm okay with that.
I'm okay with that.
Yeah, I think that would be good.
Move approval.
With the change, changes?
GA-11-15 with the proposed changes.
I see.
So we have a motion, a second, to approve GA-11-15 with the wording that David has offered. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried unanimously. Okay, we have no quasi-judicial public hearings and no second readings resolutions, so we will move on to the consent agenda and what we... There's one thing. There's the minutes.
Move approval.
Well, first, we got to have, normally, we have public comment. If anybody would like to comment on the minutes from the last meeting, now is your time to do so. Consent agenda comments. Okay, seeing none, we have a motion?
I will send you a consent agenda.
Yes.
Now that the last minute.
That's the only thing on the consent agenda.
Sam Castronovo, I'm a resident of Pontegora. I have a comment on capital improvement projects.
Okay, that'll be next after we pass the consent agenda.
Okay.
Okay?
Stay put.
You can stay there.
Stay put.
Stay there.
Okay, so we have a motion. Do we have a second?
A second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, to approve the consent agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried unanimously. Okay, now we will move into our regular agenda and we will take citizens' comments on regular agenda items only, which will be the capital improvements project, the seismic air gun blasting and fracking, and waiving special exception requirement for artificial turf. We will take comments on those items. You state your name, please. You have three minutes.
I'm Sam Castronovo. I'm a resident of Pontegora, Seminole Lakes. A couple articles have appeared in the paper concerning the path that is going to be extended along Aquiesta from 41 to Airport Road. The first one said there was $594,000 coming from FDOT for safety purposes. The last article said it's for decorative lighting. I've spoken to you before and spoken at the MPO concerning the two crossings on US 41 at Alligator Creek. The path is terminated at Alligator Creek at both crossings. This $600,000 roughly for safety, as FDOT has designated, should really be spent on making a crossing at those two, rather than putting lighting on this new path that you're going to... I'm not opposed to the path because I think you might have students actually using it to get out towards the schools once they get to Taylor Road. So I think it's a good idea. I just don't think you should light it. And as far as lighting's concerned, I'm a senior citizen. Senior citizens go for the early bird at 4:00. They come home, you know, to have a, possibly have a drink, because not everybody has a drink, and watch the sunset. Then they might play a couple games of gin rummy and then roll up the sidewalks at 8:00. I have never, I have never seen one person on that path along 41 that's lit, walking after dark. Not one. Not one. And I've traveled it many, many times over the last 10 years. So my suggestion is is delete that, that decorative lighting. Yeah, it might be pretty, but your money would be much better spent taking care of that safety hazard that exists at those two Alligator crossings. And I'm sure if FDOT has designated this for safety, that they'll let you move those, that money, so... Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Morning. Steve Fabian. Glad that gentleman brought that issue up. When originally, the city asked for money from the FDOT to put lighting down that side of the street. Street lighting, not decorative lighting. All of a sudden, it changed to decorative lighting. Now, all of a sudden, it became a pathway. There are 12 driveways that that thing is going to go by. There are only two escape lanes, one at Tope Plaza and one at Shell. So that means anybody coming down 41, people going to, bicyclers on that type, they're going to have to stop in the roadway to let those bicycles out. On top of it, you decided to take $172,000 that was promised in the sales tax for sidewalks on Amanda and Vasco. Before the election on the sales tax, there were multiple meetings, meeting after meeting to identify priorities. Now, all of a sudden, after the vote is approved, you're changing and saying, we're not going to use that money for that. And I think that's sending a poor signal to the citizens because you told them you were going to do one thing and all of a sudden, you're changing your money.
Thank you. Citizens' comments on regular agenda items. Be sure to state your name, please. You have three minutes.
Good morning. My name is Pete Worthington. I live in BSI and current and apparently after yesterday, the ongoing Commodore, the Burnstour Isles Boat Club. And my comment is not with regard to the BERT cut and whether it should be done, but more the evaluation that is going through. And from what I can read, the evaluation is of the, of the alternatives of the cut themselves. And three of those come out, are proposed, come out to Alligator Creek. I see no reference whatsoever to evaluating Alligator Creek itself with regard to width, with regard to safety. I would submit that that should be included in any evaluation on any alternative that goes into the creek itself. The Army Corps of Engineers, I, my understanding is, and again, I'm not an engineer, I don't know all the particulars, my understanding is, the particular area that's bad is from marker 23, which is where the cut would come out to marker 17, which, when you get into the channel itself. But Alligator Creek, I understand by definition, goes all the way to marker 1, which is out in the harbor. So, in my opinion, we want to ensure that we have safety and that we have adequate width from wherever the cut comes through, all the way to Charlotte Harbor, which would be marker 1. Thank you.
My name is Ed Minzer. I live in Burnstour Isles. I'm also chairman of the Alligator Creek Advisory Committee. And to what Pete was talking about here was the fact that that cut through is going to be a 50-foot channel going through and hitting Alligator Creek, as you said, right approximately at marker 23. The channel at marker 23 in Alligator Creek is only 25 feet wide. And it stays 25 feet wide until it passes marker 17. That's a distance of about 2,000 feet. At marker 17, the channel opens up to 75 feet, no problem. In the process of designing this cut through, what is going to have to happen is the powers to be are going to have to go into the creek and, and in addition to getting permits to make the cut through, they'll also have to get permits from, from the Army Corps to widen the Alligator Creek channel from 25 feet to 50 feet. And of course, that's a, a long process. Well, that means additional dredging and of course, moving their markers. Unless that's done, you're going to have, if you, I understand that some of these catamarans in Pontegora are 25 or 20 to 25 feet wide, one catamaran in our channel would block the entire channel and no boats could get, come up the other way. So you'd have to, you have a real problem there. And it doesn't seem to be addressed. It seems to be that your cut through is ending at the creek and not going any further. Well, it's, it's got to go out into the harbor and you got to take it to harbor. How that process is going to work, I'm not sure because our MSBU that maintains that creek would not want to pay for it, for that widening, because we don't need it that wide. And, and of course, and, and the other thing is, is that once that cut through hits our creek, I don't know if they're aware of it, but the entire community of Pontegora Isles would then be assessed the fees that are currently being assessed by Alligator Creek. But that's, that's another story. But a, a final point, just as information, the National Marine Fisheries has given us approval to go to six foot and a dredge, we currently are five foot, to go to six feet. And the Army Corps has, has that letter in their hands now and we expect to have a formal permission to go to six foot within the next 30 to 60 days. Probably by the end of the year, we should have a, a formal permit to then dredge to six. But I just wanted to make you aware of it, that you've got to take this, the entire creek into, into account to handle this. Thank you.
So Ed, when you said Alligator Creek Advisory Committee, that's the actual, the MSBU for the county that collects the money for this?
For the county of, the county.
Okay.
We're essentially the, we're the equivalent to your, the maintenance advisory committee for Pontegora Isles and for Burnstour Isles, whereas, except we're, our responsibility is the Alligator Creek itself.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Mark Fiveo. I'm a resident of Burnstour Isles. And I'd just like to speak to a couple of points on the capital improvement projects review that we're going to see here shortly. Number one would be that insofar as the implications to the Burnstour Isles perimeter canal dredging, Burnstour Isles is a boating community. And as such, we need to be aware and support and maintain those waterway accesses that are the same as the, the road accesses. And if we, those interconnecting canals, such as the perimeter canal, really provide the access through all areas of Burnstour Isles, and they must be maintained in a safe condition. The required dredging, I think, that we see now as being offered or being planned, is to some degree a reflection of prior dredging that was not done, and we're paying the price for that now. And I, and I think that we need to maintain those canals in, in good shape and, and provide a safe access for all boaters using the community's canals. The other thing would be the cut through and the matrix that's been developed, I'm not sure who did it, the channel assessment matrix. And I'd just like to point out or recommend that you look at what's described as the ranking mechanism here, that if you look at, the numbers of 1 to 10 are used to grade, if you will, the various elements of consideration there in coming up with a decision. And some of them are 1 to 10, some of them are 1 to 5. I mean, certainly, and it is the high score that will win this review. Certainly, if, if some of these things only have a maximum of 5, they're not weighted as high as, as some of the other elements. I would suggest that, that weighting mechanism be reviewed in some detail and, and have that better reflect the requirements of the city and, and the boating community. Thank you.
My name is Corby Lasage. I'm a resident of Burnstour Isles. Just a quick note here, maybe I'm mistaken, but wasn't the channel planned for 80 feet wide and 50 feet at the bottom? Am I incorrect?
This is just comment time, yeah. This is not a question and answer time, so we're just taking comments.
Well, I, I'm just not certain on my numbers, but I was under the impression that the channel coming out of BERT cut was going to be 80 feet wide and 50 feet at the bottom. So if it is 80 feet wide and it's coming into a 25-foot channel, you have a problem. That's like, that's taking a, a six-lane highway and going into a two-lane highway. It's just not going to work. So somebody has to put a little bit of thought into the, the rest of the channel. The channel really goes all the way out to marker 1 and 2. It can't end right at Alligator Creek. That's my only comment. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jay Buckley, Pontegora Boaters Alliance, and also a member of the MAC committee.
I would suggest, I, I thought Hans would probably be here, but I would suggest that this is, I guess I'm, I'm not quite sure what you're accomplishing here. Are you, have you all been working on your scores all week? Or is this just being presented as discussion now? Because number one, I think in regard to some of these questions about the effect of Alligator Creek and the channel coming in, Charles Mops is, gives us a report at MAC every month on the progress of dredging Alligator Creek and the implications and so forth. And at our last meeting, I, the gentleman is correct that it's going, Alligator Creek is going to be dredged. I'm surprised that you haven't asked Hans to be here because he can, he is best prepared to answer how that cut is going to enter into Alligator Creek and what effects it might have, what the plans are for the width and so forth. And any questions that might be, come up about depth. So I think we're, we're sort of not prepared to make wise decisions based on this today. Thank you.
Hi. My name is John Ford, and I also live in Burnstour Isles. With regards to the width, with, I believe these gentlemen are talking about the width of Alligator Creek. This project is not, your project does not address, address that particular width. And that's the primary failing here, or one of the primary failings. But I want you to just reconsider eliminating that particular op, option. That land area is environmentally sensitive. And if I'm looking at the map correctly and if my conversation with the Marine Fisheries is, is correct, it appears that's critical habitat for an endangered species. It seems to me that a city that goes out and seeks a lot of positive accolades and actually gets them, does not need to be involved in an issue through environmentally sensitive area. I think this is a poor, this sets a poor, would paint a poor picture of the city's background and what they are seeking. There's also many South County residents and city residents that live down that direction that did not get a vote in this process. I, you know, I kind of feel like we're being railroaded. You know, somebody, somebody else is taking all their traffic and boom, they're just going to vote, send it through my right of way that we've been using. So, you know, I mean, there have been comments that, in the paper, written by unnamed people, that nobody can stop, you know, the people that are trying to put this through. Nobody likes to have something jammed down their throats. So anyways, the, so anyways, I, I encourage you to pursue some, some other option. Thanks for listening.
Thank you.
My name is Rick Dahl. I'm a Burnstour Isle resident. I'm concerned about the cut through and pretty much the same thing Corby said. I think you're going to create a bottleneck. If it's 80 feet wide and two larger boats could come through into Alligator Creek and going out to Charlotte Harbor, it's not quite wide enough, in my opinion. If you go out Ponte d'Elieonne, it's plenty wide enough and it's a straight shot out. Going out Alligator Creek, it used to be an S curve. We straightened that out. It's now an L curve. It kind of looks like an L that my grandson would draw. He's three years old. It's not a good L, but there's a turn, plus it's a high-speed turn. You get two larger boats going through there, there's not enough width. My boat is 10 feet wide and I slow down when there's another boat coming the other direction. It's not a safe passage at the width that it is now. It needs to be wider or at least a straight cut, not an L turn. Thank you.
My name is Gary Brewster. I am also in Burnstour Isles, and I echo many of these sentiments. I think the answer is really simple. You're talking about an alternate channel to Charlotte Harbor. Then it needs to be engineered to Charlotte. Then it needs to be engineered to Charlotte Harbor. Right now, three of the six alternatives don't get to Charlotte Harbor. As pointed out, they dump into a narrow channel. It is a classic funnel, a larger channel intersecting an existing smaller channel. And you're asking for problems if it's not engineered all the way out to marker one, as has been pointed out. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other citizens' comments on regular agenda items? Okay, just want to clarify that the matrix that's in the draft, is a draft. We're not going to be scoring that today. What we're going to be doing is agreeing or disagreeing with the direction that the staff and the engineer is going to be going in. There aren't going to be any decisions except for, is this the way that we want to proceed with viewing and assessing all of the alternatives that have been pointed out? So there's no scoring of the matrix. The matrix hasn't even been accepted yet. It's a total draft. So we will be getting to that conversation later after we do the capital improvements program update, just to clarify. Thank you. So now, any others, we're done with citizens' comments, and we're moving on to...
Yes, Mayor, we're going into the capital improvement projects. I have about ten percent of the staff here to answer questions and to perform magic here. David, you're going to start it off?
I will.
Okay.
David Hilston, Urban Design Manager, will start off with the first project for an update is Harbor Walk East. What we have is a situation on the curve east of the courthouse is, it becomes a traffic issue and blind spots want to, so there's going to be a widening of that actual walk out. It's sales tax funded at fifteen thousand dollars.
David?
Yes.
What's the timing on that?
Do we have time? No. Within the fiscal, yeah, within the year, it'll be completed. Next is the Mary Street Overlook on Harbor Walk East. This is where the downtown drainage study was done. If you remember, we had citizens come in asking, it's such a nice area, can we put in some benches and whatnot? That's what we're looking to do at this particular spot. We anticipate completion in 2015, December of 2015. This will be funded through park impact fees. The next is Harbor Walk at Lashley.
I have a question. A question on that particular one. Are you going to add perhaps, this is on the Harbor Walk, but it's an overlook, so the Mary Street Overlook will be an enhancement? Is that something we can put in, like on our website, that this is something that's a feature?
Absolutely. We can do that. Again, it was citizen requested, and so this is a very good, very good PR.
I know that Dr. Manning actually has requested since the work was going to be done there, if there were going to be ways to take advantage of that, so that's a great idea.
Kim?
I just was going to ask, if this is what it looks like now, are you going to sod that or?
Well, over time, we eventually, the mangrove will work its way, work its way.
Okay. And where are the benches going to go?
I believe on the, what would be the southern side of the reflecting pond.
Oh, we're calling it a reflecting pond. Wow, I like that. Well, that sounds fancy. Yeah, a fancy FEMA ditch, but now it's a reflecting pond.
Tomato, tomato. The next is Harbor Walk behind the Lashley Park Municipal Marina. This will connect the Harbor Walk behind the Marina back over two forty-one. We have completed the conceptual drawings. The construction package is at procurement, but there's some changes that we need to make to that, so it's not actually on go at this point. Sales tax funds, it's budgeted at two hundred thousand dollars.
Are those changes FDOT part of their process?
No, it's in-house.
Okay.
We have some.
So we're done with their approvals? We've completed all those approvals for that?
Mark, have we completed the FDOT? Yes.
Yes, okay. So we're just tweaking the design then?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Next is Harbor Walk US Forty-One, southbound bridge underpass improvements. This is the widening of the pathway and improve the appearance. You know how the abutment underneath really comes up and is kind of annoying, for lack of a better word. We'll be doing some work on that to make it more attractive and so forth. Those are sales tax funds budgeted at two hundred and eighty thousand dollars. The next is Harbor Walk West Seawall. This is ongoing currently, as you know. We do anticipate completion by February of 2016. Sales tax funds of ninety-six thousand for design and then for construction, nine hundred and eighty-eight thousand and change.
I have a question, David. When this is done, are you going to continue the pathway now?
What we have to do is have the seawall done prior to, which will probably, I think it's the next, yeah, the next slide. We have to have this done prior to FDOT giving us funds to complete that entire sidewalk.
Okay, so, but will that happen before up by the pavilion? Or are you just going to sod that until the other phase?
It should go, it should go from hand to hand, the way we're anticipating the funding.
Tom?
David, question. The sidewalk that Kim is referring to, I realize that we can't start that sidewalk until after the initial phase that's, we're getting funding for it. But can the sidewalk be done from the, from bayfront all the way up to the Phase One? Or is that broken up into different phases as well? And if it is, can we think about just doing the sidewalk kind of ahead of schedule or somewhat out of sequence? And that way, all of that work would be done?
Certainly. Our major concern is that we don't commingle the funds because then FDOT takes over the entire project from all the way to, from the hotel all the way down to Fisherman's Village. So yes, we can, once we get going. Let me get back to you with an answer as far as what that sidewalk will be as the, if it's a part of the actual seawall replacement.
Okay.
I'll get back to you. I do not know.
So, but the existing sidewalk that's in the park now is still going to be there?
Yes.
Because we're talking about behind the playground and that area, which has never had, except for the part that we have installed behind Bay Shore, which the sidewalk to nowhere is there. But eventually, after FDOT, then I would imagine, because mobilization, I mean, I don't know how we would split it up again. I mean, we already have all these zones and, you know, different things going on. It might be really complicated to do, but we could look at it.
That's all I'm suggesting, is that we look at the sidewalk, that portion that's in Phase, in Phase Two and Phase Three, and see if we could combine the sidewalk portion so we could get that work done and at least have access to the seawall, to the Harbor Walk.
Just because it's all tore up right now, so something's going to have to happen there.
Yeah.
Right. It's that balance between the FDOT money and our money. So let me see if there was in the plans, and I'm sorry, I'm not clear on that.
That's fine, that's fine.
But we will get you an answer.
Well, I think what they're speaking to is that after the seawall's done, and say FDOT starts down by Pontagorda waterfront, is the rest of the park going to look like it does now? That's what I think the concern is, like, are we going to, you know, improve it somehow so it's usable?
Right. Oh, I was just talking about continuing the sidewalk behind the bayfront center.
Right.
Because right now, it's, they're filling it in, it's all done, the cap is on, and it's all great, you know, they're grading it, and that's all happening right now. So next phase, they're either going to have to sod it.
So you're speaking of the sidewalk behind, yeah, they're going to have to replace that. That will be replaced.
Right. Well, what I mean is, my question was, are they going to continue it down as far as wherever? Or are they going to put sod in there until we get the grant, then they'll finish down there, then they'll come rip up the sod, put the sidewalk in?
We'll get you a full answer on that. And by the way, we are bringing back to you the entire remainder portion of the Harbor Walk area for your review. So bringing everybody up to speed, and they'll be, I believe, within the next two meetings.
Okay. Okay.
Okay, the next one is Harbor Walk West Area One. We're, this is the FDOT project, basically. The design is complete. We're awaiting FDOT approval. Construction's to begin latter part of the calendar year of 2016. Again, FDOT lap funding at one point seven million, basically.
If I can just make a comment, because I've spent the last couple of weeks with my neighborhood, and I know, you know, the diagonal parking, I love that, I love the bricks. There's some real concerns about that, about, and I just want to put it out there, about now we have the bicyclist and all that, now we're going to have people backing into traffic. They're going to be backing out into that area, and there's just a lot of traffic right there. So I'm just...
The next is US Forty-One Mert and Lighting. This is the project that we brought to the last meeting requesting the ability to take the Baynard Avenue sidewalk, put it in with the FDOT funding. FDOT was going to pull apart or take away the lighting phase of US Forty-One if we did not have a path. This was our alternative to make that, and we've moved forward with the suggestion. Design is in fiscal year 2016, construction seventeen eighteen. Design costs are one hundred and seventy-two thousand, and construction is five hundred and ninety-four thousand. That's a mixture of sales tax and FDOT funding.
So that money, though, was not designated toward any other sidewalk project besides Baynard, correct?
Correct, correct.
It was not another Vasco or, okay.
It was a specific project of Baynard in order to create that. And by the way, we'll go back to Baynard and do that in the next two years, I believe. That was specifically to make the connection up by Monty's.
Any other questions?
There was some conversation earlier on the citizens' comments about expanding the Mert at the overpasses, the Alligator Creek overpasses. That's come up in the NPO, and there is some funding in, on the way for that, from what I've been told.
Yes, we've definitely got that in for the work project.
Yeah, I would like to encourage in any of the meetings that you attend, Tom, if you can help them prioritize that, because that is a concern of the people on the bicycles or pedestrians that have to go up onto the shoulder of the bridges. And I've done that myself, and it's a little bit, you know, makes you a little nervous, but...
And I will. And it has the support of the Charlotte County Committee, Chris Constance, who is the chairman of the NPO, so we will be talking about that.
Okay, good.
And I will let you know that Mitchell is at the NPO meetings today, and it will be discussed again. We, I believe we have it in outer years within the NPO's five-year work program to do the improvement.
Is there any, did we ever do any design with that?
No.
No.
No design at this point.
Okay.
Okay, the next is sidewalk improvements Phase One. This is, we've already completed the Marion Avenue and that's a bit to US Forty-One. Excuse me. Madrid Boulevard sidewalk will be next. This is making the connection at the Walgreens down to the existing sidewalk in front of the Walmart.
And they want this, right, Nancy? Are they, are they okay with this?
No, this is not at the Walgreens. This is...
Oh, I'm sorry.
This is by the shopping center.
At the Publix.
Okay.
By the Publix.
Making the World Bank connection.
It's good?
Well, this is good. This is not a residential area.
Okay, and that's sales tax funds again, budgeted for a hundred thousand.
Right.
Next is Community Garden. This is the large garden that'll be incorporated with the Health Department as well as the historical archive property off of Grace Street. The concept is complete. We're submitting construction plans to engineering for review. The proposed completion date is June 2016. This is underneath CDBG funding for forty-five thousand dollars. As you've gone through the action plan previously, we have a three-year outlook for this program. We're trying to turn it into more of an economic development tool for the neighborhood on the east side and a couple of residents that actually can work the garden and make it into an economic development tool. Next is Nature Park Phase One. What we're doing is hardscape and ADA improvements, basically putting in, excuse me, it's currently under construction. We're anticipating completion in January 2016, using park impact fees at thirty-five thousand dollars. This will help us in our, later on, you'll see our ADA transition plan. It's needed improvements to allow for ADA requirement. Nature Park Phase Two, same ideas. We're doing the hardscape and ADA improvements. Concept is complete, design submitted, engineering, construction in fiscal year sixteen seventeen. Park impact fees will be paid for this portion at a hundred and thirty thousand dollars with a possible look at enhancing that with CDBG funds in the future. The next is the ADA Transition Plan. As everybody knows, we receive federal funding via entitlement funds. As part of receiving those CDBG funds, we need to be ADA compliant in the next coming year. For that, we've utilized a portion of our CDBG funds and some general funds, twenty-five thousand dollars, in order to do, have a consultant come in, evaluate all city properties for ADA compliance, and create a transition plan for those that are not compliant. What they'll do is they'll set us on a long-term goal of becoming ADA compliant.
For city facilities?
Yes, yes. Which includes rights of way, et cetera. And I think that's it for me.
Any questions for Mr. Hilston? Nope.
Thank you, David. Nice job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. For the record, Rick Keeney, Director of Public Works. The ADA improvements you see here, it has a budget of just under eleven thousand dollars. And this is incorporated with our resurfacing program, which is going to start the first of next year. Whenever we resurface a road next to a sidewalk, curb cut, we got to make it ADA compliant, so we're doing that throughout the city with our resurfacing program. Drainage improvements. This is the project we've talked about that's in the Boca Grande area, neighborhood of town. And our city engineer has been working with our procurement department, and we've, Mark's been working on the information for the RFQ to put this out. The dollar amount for the design is a hundred thousand dollars, and it's over the threshold for our library is what we're understanding, so we're going to have to go out for an RFQ on this project. Once this is designed, it's a million-dollar project, we're estimating, so it's going to be quite a large project.
Is there FEMA money for that, possibly?
Well, Mark has been checking into it. So far, I'm not sure we're meeting the requirements of the, what we've had for our last two projects. But as you can see, it floods pretty bad, so I don't believe we've given up. But our first brush at it, we were trying to meet the requirements, but we're not sure we're going to make it. Storm sewer reconstruction. This is seventy-five thousand dollars. Throughout the, mostly it's the Pontagorda Isles area. When Pontagorda Isles was developed, they used the galvanized pipe. And as you know, we have brackish water and through the years, many of those pipes have been corroding. We have replaced through our relining project, it's where we put a liner inside our deteriorating pipes. And we have a lot completed, but there still are some out there. And when you have two homes built side by side, we cannot get our excavator in there to dig up the pipes. So we leave this as an emergency fund if there's any of these pipes that do fail between homes, and so we have that sitting there. We have a contractor on standby, and we can reline these pipes to secure any failing pipes between homes. The next one is our storm sewer cleaning truck. This is on order. It's been on order. You can see it's quite a piece of machinery, and we anticipate delivery in December. We ordered this last October, so it takes over a year to get a lot of these larger pieces of equipment.
Are we going to have a ribbon cutting for this one?
We sure can. National Pollute and Discharge Elimination System, MPDES, we refer to it as. It's an ongoing program every year. It's, we're constantly training our staff. We keep records of pipes we've cleaned, and anything we do with storm drainage, the Engineering Division keeps very good records of it. Every two years, we have to put in a report to Florida Department of Environmental Protection showing that we're doing our best management practices. Ten thousand dollar budget, and again, it's ongoing. It'll be ongoing forever, as far as we know. The next one is soils stabilization at the Marina Point. As you can see in the picture, if you look on the left-hand side of the path, that's filter fabric through the years. The storm and the wave action has removed some of the rip rap. So we're going to be putting, repairing that, putting rip rap back in that area. And there's also across the way where the pump-out area is of the Marina, there's some rip rap missing there, too, that we have to put in. Bridge repair. Every two years, the Florida Department of Environmental... Bridge repair, every two years, the Florida Department of Environmental, Department of Transportation evaluates our bridges for us. It's very nice, so they do a thorough inspection. This is an ongoing fund that we keep in our budget. Every two years, they give us a report, and they tell us if there's any deficiencies, and we can, and we can repair the bridge with our monies that we budget. Again, we keep, this is an ongoing fund, this will continue forever. And again, we like, like it when DOT helps us, helps us with our inspections. Public Safety Perimeter Parking Lot Lighting, this is a project our city engineer has worked with, with Public Safety on. Mark has done analysis of the parking area at night, and what we're trying to get is the, the one-foot candle brightness. As you can see, that, that's on the right-hand side of the picture. Right now, throughout the parking area, it's, some are half of a candle power, some are less than that. So the material is in, and staff will do this project in-house. Probably be after the holidays, though, but we're gonna, we're gonna get, get on it as, as soon as the holidays are over. The BSI perimeter channel dredging, Gary Dishar, who's in the audience, he has done a tremendous amount of work on this project, putting this permit together. It's very thorough, it's very thick, it's very big. And he, he tried to answer as many questions as he can, could before we get questions back from DEP. He submitted that last week. There's a meeting next week with DEP to go over his submittal. So this is proceeding.
Thank you, Gary.
Capital, Capital Project Management, this is funding to help throughout the years, we do projects that are budgeted for not just Public Works, but for all the departments in the city, and this helps fund project management for those programs and projects. And I will let the Police Department speak next.
Good morning, Jason Chiskini for the Police Department. Some of the projects we have going on this year, we have several police fleet purchase projects happening. One of them's actually a carryover from last fiscal year, where we have one crime scene vehicle and three marked vehicles that were purchased. They're actually in, and we anticipate those will be fully outfitted and deployed here in the next few months. For this fiscal year, we are anticipating the purchase of three marked vehicles and two unmarked vehicles, and we're hoping to have those completely outfitted and ready for deployment for the fiscal year is out. The funding was both sales tax and general fund for the fiscal year 15. We had about $171,000 worth of expenses that we're projecting, and for this year, we're proposing about $221,000.
So are we, we're going to the SUV now?
Yes, the, the police vehicle that we actually have coming in now is the, what's called a Ford Interceptor Utility Vehicle. And that's a change from the Dodge Charger, which we had been using the last handful of years, which we've had a lot of issues with. The next project we're gonna talk about is the citywide radio communications upgrade. This is a project that is part of the, the whole city is gonna be dealing with. What we're gonna be doing is replacing our handheld and vehicle-mounted radios citywide. This is a parallel project with Charlotte County Government, who actually owns the radio system that we just utilize. It's all part of our, what's called a P-25 digital radio communication infrastructure upgrade. The current system that's in place goes back to 1998. It's barely holding on, and it's something that the county finally got the funding to move forward with, and we've been preparing for years for this project, and we're moving forward with that. We've had meetings with, I'm sorry.
Jason, is it gonna be implemented in stages, or do we have to wait until October of 2017 for the final implementation?
What'll happen is the, their project managers are saying that the project will, should be 100% completed in October of 17. However, there's actually a transition period where you basically are working off of both radio systems. So we're able to transition from one to the other. So the, we've already had meetings with some of our end-users. Really, our next step in-house in the city is to, to try and start evaluating some of the equipment to see where we wanna go, and then we'll have procurement do a request for proposal on the project. What we're anticipating is we should have all of our equipment purchased and, and received by March of 17, which really means right about the end of this fiscal year, we should have that order in. It's gonna take time to receive the order, there's a lot of technical issue, you have the program radios, we have to get them into all the vehicles and deploy to the, to the personnel, so it's quite a lengthy process. This is a sales tax-funded project, which is gonna be right around $520,000.
Jason, when did the county say they're converting? Have they said?
Right around that March of 17 timeframe is what we were told that we should have everything. We should be up and operational, because that's when the radio system should be operational to do that conversion. And they're hoping by October 17, 100% of everything will be done, nobody will be on the old system anymore, and they'll be dismantling that.
So there's that overlap between March and October of both systems to, like what you just said?
Correct, correct. And we're really gonna be using the new, this new system. The radios are programmed to operate on the new system, even though it's using some of the old system technologies, from what I understand. We have funding this year to do a modernization of the Public Safety Communications Center. This is a facility that's used 24 hours a day, and we, we've been in that facility since 2002. We're gonna be doing some furniture, console replacements, new paint, flooring, monitors, storage, et cetera. We had our end-users, as our dispatchers went out and towards some other dispatch centers in March and June of 15, just to kinda get some ideas of what they'd like to see in the new proposal. We also had some meetings at the end of September, October, with some of our technical users. These are the folks from 911, the radio manager for the county, and so forth, all giving us recommendations. So our next step really is to try and compile that information, and then work with our procurement department to put out a request for proposal. And we are anticipating completion date September of 16. This is one of these projects that is significant, we don't know exactly how long it's gonna take, but I would anticipate about a month, which means we have to relocate to our backup site. It's not ideal, but it does work. I explain to people, it's like going to a hotel instead of being at your house, still can do everything, but it's not quite the same as being at home. But it's something that we've gotta work through, and of course, we have our accreditation program going on this upcoming year, which we, we have to kinda work around that also. So we're gonna kinda try and plan that accordingly. And again, this project is funded for about $36,000. We have been in communication with Charlotte County 911 to try and get them to supplement some funding for this project also. And the next slide I have is the modernization of the Public Safety Training Room. This is a training room that is not just shared by police and fire, but also other departments in the community as a whole. This facility hasn't really been upgraded at all since we moved in the building in 2002, and it's starting to show its age significantly. We're gonna try and, we're looking at things such as monitor speakers and technology enhancements, new flooring and paint and so forth. We are working with IT to try and get some ideas on, you know, to try and make this a good functioning training facility for everybody. We are anticipating that will hopefully will be completed around July of 16, and the money of the general fund is about $14,000.
And for any of you that's going to take the Citizens Academy course coming up, that room is where you get to shoot the taser.
Yes, that's it.
All right, good morning. Ray Briggs, Fire Chief. We just have a couple of things on the list. First is fleet replacement. We have one Class A pumper or fire engine, and two admin vehicles. One is actually a rollover from last year that we are expecting delivery hopefully soon. We anticipate, actually, the fire apparatus is in, is being specced right now, and we are hoping to take delivery in FY 2016, much like Rick's project. These take a long time to build, and so they're a little difficult.
What do we do with that number 12 there? What are we doing with that?
That goes away. It, that'll roll out a fleet that's 17, 18 years old, and the one that's been, it's tough to fix. So we move into it on a regular basis for, you know, backup and reserve for maintenance and repairs. And so it'll, it typically will either get traded in or sold, you know, it's, we have no desire to keep it back in fleet, so that's that one. Next, we have fire hose replacement. We like, we are on a 10-year replacement for fire hose. Some of the hoses we have in, in, in stock is 17, 18 years old, so it's time to do some, some purchasing and upgrades, and again, we just throw a little bit at it every now and again and try to upgrade, so. Coming out of general fund. And our last one is some PPE or bunker gear, personal protective equipment. We are on a 10-year replacement with that as well, and so we are, we're thrilled, we, this is some reappropriation, some funds that we, we had from last year, and some replacement. That's all for me.
Good morning. Brad Schute, IT Manager, here to present our technology projects for this year. First and foremost, some of these are carryovers from last year, our city website redesign. We now have our design that we're moving forward with, and so...